Good morning, Mayor Fletcher.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Colleen.
Good morning.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Congratulations to you, too.
You ladies both deserve those rewards.
Yeah.
Today to get a coffee shout out and the line was about seven cars deep. Fogtown one for emerging business. So it was pretty cool.
Yeah. Good morning, Patty.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm pretty well. Didn't sleep well, but other than that.
Yeah, that sort of has become the norm for a lot of people.
Indeed, it has.
Yeah.
I was out in Forks for much of the day yesterday.
Oh, yeah. How is it out there?
It was very rainy, but.
Was it?
Rod gave a tour to some people looking at starting a business and he did a great job.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, I've been receiving, I'm on an email string with lots of folks talking about the Washington DFW closures for recreational fishing and they have been having meetings with, oh, gosh. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for joining our coffee chat this week. We're very honored to have our county commissioners join us today. Commissioner Ozias, Commissioner Peach and Commissioner Johnson. And also they have, we've asked their CFO, Mark Lane, to join as well. So they're going to be, we're going to be focusing primarily on Clallam County's economy and all the elements, along with the pandemic that affect that. So we'll have questions towards the end. So if you would please mute your your device now, and if you'd like to ask a question, you can put your name in the chat. And then if we have lots of time, I'll just make it open for questions, but I will call on you to ask a question if you would like. After they're done providing some presentation and some, a few remarks. So Commissioner Ozias, thanks so much for joining us and take it away.
You bet. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Colleen, and thanks to the Clallam EDC for hosting us for this conversation this morning. I know that there's a lot of interest in, in really two related subjects. And one is how can we move to the next phase of reopening? And then speaking a little bit more broadly, our CFO, Mark Lane, has put together a really helpful presentation that highlights some of the impacts of, of the COVID pandemic across business sectors in our county. So just touching real briefly on, on what the commissioners have been trying to do with regard to our reopening. When the new plan was announced by the governor a month or so ago, we had extensive conversation with Dr. Barry, our health officer, who indicated really two things to us. One, that it was highly unlikely that we would be successful in decoupling those regions, giving all the work that's gone into it, and how important it was to focus our efforts on things that we can control, like supporting the vaccine distribution effort. So our initial tack was to, you know, was to focus on the things that we do have the ability to control. And I think some of the, the success that our county has seen in vaccine distribution is reflected in that. But given, given the untenable, the untenable nature of, of our situation, the fact that our county is doing so well that we are, you know, instead of incentivizing, you know, our, our businesses and our economy, we're actually, you know, we're, by, by being held back, I feel like we're moving in the wrong direction. I think the other commissioners felt that way as well. We decided that the, our best chance at being impactful would be to really echo and support the language and the effort that our legislative delegation, you know, started talking about last Friday. I really appreciated that and I think that they were, they were right on. So yesterday, the commissioners formally approved a letter to the governor that echoes that language and requests that we are allowed to move to phase two as quickly as possible. So we intend to follow up on that in every, every way that we are able. And in the meantime, we're going to continue doing everything we can to, to make sure that our community stays as healthy as possible. So I know we'd be more than happy to take questions about that, but I've had the chance to sneak preview Mark Lane's presentation. And unless either of the other commissioners have anything that they wanted to add right off the bat here, and it looks like perhaps at least one does, I'm anxious to hear Mark's presentation. So Randy, I see, I see unmuted yourself, so I'll be quiet and turn it over to you.
No, I, and, and thank you, Mark, and thank you, Colleen, for having us. I, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood when, when the degradation or aggr- what did I said? Aggregation of all the counties together came about, first of all, they never talked to the county. They never talked to our health doctor or any, anyone else. So it kind of appeared and there we were, part of a group of four counties. And we had no input to that. And right behind that, I've got to tell you, there's legislation that certainly all of our representatives, our senators are pushing back against, which are also trying to say, oh, for public health, we need to have a regional plan and not a plan with the county. And I just want to highlight both of those things because neither one of these came about from anyone here in this county for sure. So thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Peach, is there anything you'd like to add briefly?
Oh. Sorry about that. Yeah, I just, I echo the comments of both my fellow commissioners. My genuine concern is the the governor's disadvantaging rural communities. And that's, healthcare is something that should not be specific to the, to the cities. So I, I've been following the legislation, the Senate's legislation was interesting. It would say that the legislature, not the governor, should control this. A bit of a symbolic gesture as the, if approved, the document would go to the governor. But I think carries an important message, and that is that healthcare is uniform in all, for all citizens. I'm interested in the conversation that'll follow, and thank you very much for allowing me to join you.
Yes, thank you. Mark Lane, I have allowed screen sharing, so if you want to go ahead and share the screen, or I can pull up the PowerPoint if you'd like me to do that.
Uh, yeah, I'll pull, I'll, I'll pull it up here in a second. First of all, just thank you for having me here this morning. It's very much a pleasure to speak to all of you today. And one of the things that I was asked to, you know, prepare and, and, and give you guys a talk about is really a snapshot of how Clallam County's taxable retail sales performed during 2020. And one of the things I would preface, and this is a source of frustration for me as well as I know, Colleen, is there's a significant delay in how quickly the Department of Revenue posts sales, taxable sales activity that occurs by jurisdiction in our county. And just to give you an idea, this presentation is going to be focused primarily on the second quarter of 2020, which, as we know, that was really the, you know, the first core, the onset of, of the, of the pandemic's impact on our, our economy. And really, in some ways, the, the harshest period of time when a lot of, a lot of businesses, quite frankly, that were non-essential, were closed or partially or fully closed. And so I apologize in advance that this data is limited to a second quarter snapshot, but unfortunately, we're, we're beholden and limited by the timeliness of the information that we get from Department of Revenue. We do expect third quarter information to be available sometime this month. I haven't, I don't see a specific date, but unfortunately, they're, you know, they are several months in arrears in getting this information posted, which is unfortunate from the standpoint that as, as we jump into this, obviously, as you, as you see the information broken down by segment, this is intel that is incredibly valuable to decision makers. And certainly, I think, having this kind of information more timely during the crisis that we, you know, started into last year and, and really continue to be in is paramount in really understanding what industries and businesses are being particularly impacted. And so in the absence of having that information, you know, obviously, we had great organizations like the EDC and the Chambers of Commerce and other entities that really, you know, kept us, you know, appraised of which businesses were hurting. And certainly, when we got around to starting to determine how to allocate cares dollars, we had that information. But anyway, let me jump into the presentation. And hopefully, everyone sees my screen. So again, this is a 2020 taxable retail sales review during the COVID epidemic, second quarter review. This slide, one of the things that, first of all, just stepping back for a second, I thought I would give a quick comparison year over year of how each of the jurisdiction areas performed in the second quarter. Again, this is another area where I wish we had a bit more granularity, because we do have certain other markets, particularly on the west side, that we lose a bit of visibility in. But this is really the four buckets, if you will, of jurisdiction that Department of Revenue tracks. So you can see Forks, Squim and unincorporated Com County experienced declines in their taxable sales activity overall in the, in the neighborhood of 6%. Port Angeles, interestingly enough, was about even. And we, I, I thought that was interesting. But just diving in to, first of all, understanding the, the business segments. The Department of Revenue, as you can see here, breaks our economy into a number of different distinct business segments. And what I've attempted to do is really highlight and read those, those segments that were particularly hard hit during, during the pandemic. And certain of these, I will actually go into a bit of a deeper dive, because there are a number of business subsegments making these up that I think are noteworthy and kind of understanding the trends that we saw here. Yeah, accommodation, food services, that's, you know, short, basically, our lodging and food industry, our restaurants. You can see revenue year over year declined 43.7%, which is, you know, obviously a huge, huge number, both as a percentage as, as well as the dollar impact in, in our economy. I mean, it's a, almost a $20 million decrease. Pretty, pretty shocking. And again, the, the thing to frame in this as well as, you know, we're just looking at a quarter's worth of information. So extrapolate, you know, this out, certainly maybe to a certain lesser extent as businesses start to reopen later in the year. But the magnitude is obviously very ugly. Arts, entertainment, recreation, down 50%. Construction, down 10.6%. Manufacturing, down 20, almost 21%. Other services, and we'll do a deeper dive on this one, this is every, a lot of personal service businesses, think of hair salons, barber shops, a myriad of miscellaneous businesses. But again, a 20% decline there. Transportation warehousing down 72%, utilities down 46%. One of the, a couple of strong areas that we, we saw is, you know, particularly, and I, and I know for those who have been following the county monthly reports that we provide the commissioners, we, we, you know, we, we experienced overall pretty strong retail trade activity. You can see here for the quarter, despite everything that was going on, we, we experienced 7% year-over-year growth. And similarly, as you would expect, our wholesale trade followed by a similar, similar percentage. Healthcare and social assistance was actually up almost 20%. So moving from this, I'd like to jump into a deeper dive of a few, a few of these segments that I think are of particular interest to everyone here. First is, is really looking at lodging, restaurants, bars and other food services. Again, and, you know, as those who have been following our, our lodging and tax commission meetings, travel accommodations, hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, really took it on the chin during the second quarter with obviously the travel restrictions and, you know, really the height of the stay-at-home order, down 70% year-over-year. RV parks, recreational camps, down 32%. Bars, down 72%. I mean, that's huge. Restaurants, down 28%. Other accommodation, food services, so think catering businesses, that sort of thing, down 22%. So overall, as a category, down, down almost 44%. Moving on to construction, this is one where there's really a tale of two different stories here, you know, two different narratives here. Residential building, construction dropped off by almost 29% in the second quarter. And certainly, you know, I think that aligns very well with what the definition of essential business was. You know, we certainly saw a lot of residential job construction seize up in, in the, in the, in the second quarter. Started to loosen up, I believe in May. But, and then you can see these other end tie-in segments really supporting the residential building construction area, all down 20 to 30%. The two areas that I'd highlight that were actually much higher than, than the rest of the categories was in utility system construction and highway, street and bridge construction. These were up 287% and 225% respectively. I suspect that the highway, street and bridge construction had a lot to do with the, a significant amount of the work being done surrounding the Bridge Culvert projects along 101, as well as, as, as well as other jobs that have been underway during that quarter. So overall, again, construction down almost 11%. Going to the next slide, and I, I had to break this slide up into two parts. So this is part one, and then we'll, we'll get into the second part of the, of the slide. But this is retail trade, and this is a very, very broad category. Certainly the largest category, as you can imagine, and, and that generates taxable sales activity for the county. Again, some of the noteworthy ones, automobile dealers, down 19%. If we recall, you know, April and May, for all intensive purposes, the auto sales aspect of dealerships was essentially shuttered during those months. We also saw declines in furniture stores, gasoline stations, down 15%. Again, not as many people traveling. And that certainly resulted in lower incomes for gasoline stations. I think that was probably one segment that we, we quite frankly, might have kind of missed our radar in understanding that, you know what, they, they were, they were being impacted. We certainly should have drawn that connection simply because on our roads fund, we certainly saw a fall off in our motor vehicle fuel tax revenues, but certainly gas stations were impacted. This grocery store category is interesting, down 21%. I, it's hard for me to rationalize what is causing that, unless there was a change in certain types of grocery activity that became tax exempt from 2019 to 2020, or if there was just more concentrated spending in grocery stores to, towards really non-taxable items. It's hard, that one, that, that's an odd one for me to, to wrap my, wrap my arms around. You can see the other categories were up considerably. Beer, wine and liquor stores up 8.4%. Building materials and supplies dealers, you know, our Home Depots, our various hardware stores up 13%, clothing stores 24.5%. Electronic shopping and mail orders up 29%. Electronics and appliance stores up 31%. So moving to the next slide, which rounds out our retail trade overview, home furnishing stores down 14 and a half percent, jewelry luggage and leather goods stores down 26%. But then we see an uptick in lawn garden equipment stores again, around this narrative that, you know, people being stuck at home under these governor's proclamations. We saw, I think, a concentrated amount of redistribution of discretionary revenue that went towards home improvement. So you saw those categories perform very well. Let's see, what else is noteworthy here? Use merchandise stores, 44.5% decrease. So one of the things I would call out, and, and this one may jump out at you, and, and it's possible that this, this may have something to do with the, well, no, I'm sorry, it wouldn't have anything to do with that. This category that's called other retail trade non-disclosure. This is essentially, so within the Department of Revenue's reporting rules, they are restricted in reporting certain segments if there is less than a certain number of businesses representing that segment. They basically have non-disclosure rules in place to protect those businesses' information if they, let's say, are the only one in town or in that jurisdiction that are in that particular segment. And so we actually had about, in 2020, we had about $3.2 million of activity ascribed to that. So this is essentially, I hate to use the word plug, but this is the plug that is needed in order to balance these numbers to the, the first slide or second slide that I'd shown you, which showed how each category performed. So that, that's another source of frustration oftentimes with using Department of Revenue information is that you do find a fair number of segments that have a, a, a letter D assigned to their data, which means that they, they can't share the, the dollars and cents behind that particular segment in that particular jurisdiction. So again, retail trade up 7% in second quarter, which, you know, again, is surprising given what we, what we saw in, during that time period. Wholesale trade, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on here, because a lot of these swings really, you know, tend to match what we, what we talked about in, in retail trade. You can see that this category was up eight, eight and a half percent. And you can see the, the areas that were impacted one way or the other. Finally, other services, and this is again, a hodgepodge of a number of different services businesses, ranging from automotive repair and maintenance all the way through to dry cleaning businesses to personal care services, salons, barber shops, other business professional labor, political organizations, and personal and house good, goods repair and service. This category overall saw 20.4% decrease. Automotive repair and maintenance was down 15, almost 15%. As we all know, you know, personal care services were severely impacted by the non-essential business category designation under the governor's proclamation that resulted in a lot of those businesses having to shutter down 40%. So noteworthy observations that I think we can draw from, from the, the information is obviously, we had a lot of segments that really suffered significant amount of decreased activity during the early months of the COVID-19 pandemic as related to, as a result of the stay home, stay safe orders. You know, as we spoke, talked to lodging, down 70%, restaurants down 28%, residential building construction, salons, barbers, barber shops and other personal care, automotive repair and auto dealers, all significant contributors to our retail, our, our retail sales activity. Conversely, we had some segments that benefited, and they benefited, we believe, from a number of different factors. So there's been a lot of speculation, and as we got further into the pandemic, I think, you know, if you listen to any of the earnings calls of the big box stores or, you know, any of the publicly traded retail outlets, you certainly saw a lot of economic activity sparks, sparked, spawned by the stimulus funding that was injected into the economy in the second quarter. You know, we had stimulus checks, we had a $600 per week increase in the unemployment benefits, federal unemployment benefits were paid and paid during that time. We also saw what I believe was a redistribution of discretionary spending from travel to retail spending. You know, we saw a lot of people who couldn't go anywhere, they couldn't travel, either really within the state or outside of the state. And so they stayed home and they spent money in other ways. And, you know, whether it was improving their home or just buying things online, they, they, that discretionary spending seemed to have gotten redistributed to various categories that were able to benefit. And then we also saw, obviously, the impact of committed construction projects that were, were somewhat immune to what was, what was happening during COVID. You know, and again, these are the major categories that we saw increases. One area I'd point out, and I forgot to touch on this when we were, when we were in this category, other motor vehicle dealers. So think recreational vehicles, off-road vehicles, that sort of thing, up 106% quarter to quarter. And again, I think this speaks to people's travel, travel being restricted to really staying with their, their core family. And so purchase of recreational vehicles really jumped significantly, because people realized, hey, it's not the, the perceived safety of flying really went out the door when COVID hit. And so I think a lot of people turned to, well, how can we stay safe but still be able to travel, at least within our state? And so I think you saw a huge increase in the amount of, of RV purchases and off-road vehicles. So I, I found that one interesting. You know, as we mentioned, public works, construction projects up 262%. So 2020, you know, just, you know, again, this conversation's been really focused about second quarter 2020. And, you know, just want to give a few comments as to we, as we look at 2020 and where we ended up and looking ahead to 2021. You know, taxable sales activity for 2021 overall proved very resilient despite the COVID-19 pandemic. Aside from the monthly revenue declines of 15.6%, 9.6%. And what I'm speaking of here is from a sales tax collection standpoint for the county's general fund. We, we saw sales tax activity for the remainder of the year remain very robust. In the second half of 2020, we, I mean, it was not uncommon for us to see monthly revenue growths, growth rates of high single digit to low double digit. In fact, November, October, November and December, all finished with month-over-month revenue growth of, of in excess of 10%. Which, you know, I think considering everything that was happening within our economy, I, I found was, was remarkable. And as you can see, year over year, we finished 2020 with a 4.8% overall growth in our sales tax revenue. Turning to 2021, certainly it goes without saying that we have limited visibility on whether the strong taxable sales activity that we've seen in the second half of 2020 will carry over into 2021. January 2021, sales tax revenue, we, we just. January two thousand twenty one, sales tax revenue, we we just are reporting on right now. And this again was because there's a sixty day delay between when the sales tech, sales activity happens and when the county collects the sales tax. So what we collected in January actually related to November two thousand twenty economic activity, which is if you recall in November, that was when we really started, unfortunately, starting to roll back our our closures and and everyone rolled back to phase one. We we saw sixteen point two percent year over year growth to two thousand twenty. Obviously, that kind of growth, you know, we're not expecting that to continue into into two thousand twenty one. That I I just I don't see I don't see that that continuing. Certainly jumping to the next point, you know, economic uncertainty continues to surround the pandemic, you know, you know, with the resurgence of covid cases and resulting reinstatement of several restrictions on struggling businesses and rollback of phased reopenings. We did see our unemployment rate in Clom County at very late in the year tick up eight point four percent. We'd actually returned to an employment level pre December that was not very far off from where the county was employment from a full employment standpoint in in two thousand nineteen, we were between six and I I believe in two thousand nineteen, we were between six and seven percent and and prior to the uptick in December, I think we were at around seven percent. So that was, you know, a bit troubling. Obviously, the Federal Reserve met not just recently and and certainly expressed that there, you know, is, you know, there there's continue to be considerable risk facing the economy relating to the pandemic. And obviously, we have mounting concerns regarding the survival of our businesses here in our county, you know, with the impact of the phased reopening rollbacks, the unfortunate continued delays and and us being able to move forward to phase two because of this regionalization. Unfortunately, a a couple of our counties that were were tethered to are are holding us back from being able to qualify to move to phase phase two. Needless to say, all of these factors lead to an economic outlook for for Clom County in two thousand twenty one that remains pretty unclear, especially during the first half of two thousand twenty one, where again, until we get most of our population vaccinated and you know, I I think we could, you know, potentially still face some challenges here. Finally, and and I wish I I had more specifics to be able to provide here, but it's just it's still very much uncertain right now, but we do believe additional federal stimulus is likely to come. At this point, unfortunately, we just we we don't know what at what level and what type of stimulus will ultimately be approved. Certainly, I think everyone who's been following the news knows that this latest package, I believe, provides for three hundred and sixty billion dollars of local government support. My understanding is that if that, in in fact, gets approved that that there will be more discretion to afforded to states potentially as to how they can use that. And certainly, you know, we're we're subject to, if that is in fact the case, we're going to be subject to how the state determines, you know, who who gets what and what it can be used for. So I guess with that, I would open it up to any any questions that anyone might have. So.
Right. Thanks so much, Mark. So I did, I just want to add that I did put in the chat a link where people that are interested in a specific industry sector and want to continue to follow that can go to, it it is fairly complicated to get to where you want to be in if you go to that link. And of course, the EDC is always here to help you navigate through that. But I think it's important to note that DOR has always been about six months behind in reporting this information. And we at the EDC and actually the port have been trying to get DOR to allow one person in our county to have access to their data. And apparently, there is a potential process for that so that Mark Lane, the CFO of the county, another government agency, this is our data, our businesses, he can't access it. And there is a information sharing process, but we have tried for for several years to try to get that approved and have gotten nowhere. We actually were working a few years ago on legislation to force the issue, but the lawyers at DOR stepped in and said, oh, no, there's a process that you can do and but then it never happened. So maybe this is will be the impetus for us to take that up again. And I know some of you may have questions about certain industry sectors and we will, we will have this PowerPoint presentation up on our website today, if any of you guys would like to have a copy of that. And as soon as we've got it up on our website, we'll put that link in the chat box. So anyone, do you guys have any specific questions for Mark about the revenues that the county has been receiving and our cities based on sales tax? One question I have, Mark, is of so the the county get received some sales tax for businesses that are in the unincorporated areas, but not within the city limits. So as an example, I know the city of Squim generates, you know, as I've watched this a lot of revenue through Costco and Home Depot that, of course, everyone from our region shops there and they get that sales tax value, which is about three and a half percent. Is that correct? Because or around that amount, I know Squim's sales tax rate is eight point eight. And the state received the half of that.
Yeah, three and a half percent is 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 a is a close approximation of it. And you're right. In in any economic activity that happens within City of Port Angeles and City of Squim and Forks in within the the city limits of those cities, you're correct in that the the county does not receive any revenues from that. I would point out, though, that we do have the UGA outside of the city limits of of Port Angeles. That does generate a significant amount of revenue for us. I mean, certainly, a fair number of our our car dealerships are within the UGA. We also have, obviously, Walmart and the Safeway there. And so there, you know, there is a fair amount of economic activity that, you know, within the you know, I don't I hate to use the term big box stores, but you know, the major drivers of economic activity, certainly the county does have, does does receive the revenue from those.
And what percentage of the county's tax revenue is from sales tax in comparison to property tax and other revenue sources?
You mean in terms of the as a percentage of the overall pie? Well, let me see if I information readily available. I don't, you know, certainly, I, you know, our sales tax revenue you know, has usually run about seven, I believe this year ran a a close to seven million dollars this year. And and just as a point of comparison, our our next largest revenue stream for the county for the general fund is our is our property taxes, real real and personal property taxes. And that number was approximately eleven million dollars. So you know, if you look at our
Sorry, nothing, I'm putting on the spot.
No, that's all right. But let let me let me answer your question. So, you know, our total tax revenue for the for the general fund finished two thousand twenty at twenty point nine million. Eleven million of that is real and personal property taxes, and I would say approximately seven million dollars of that is sales and use taxes. And so, you know, and and just overall revenue and excluding, you know, cares and FEMA. We we generate about thirty nine point five million of revenue. So it's it's it's, you know, between sales. I mean, real property taxes is our is our most significant revenue stream and then a distant second, although, you know, still a large number is our sales taxes. Now, one of the things I I would point out is we have sales taxes that not only flowed to the general fund, but then we also have portions of, you know, point one percents of our sales taxes that go towards other other funds for providing you know, social services, HHS, juvenile, you know, we have a juvenile services sales tax. And while juvenile services is part of of general fund, they do have a separate sales tax revenue that's approximately about one point four million dollars each each of these point one percent taxes that go to, you know, health and human services, chemical dependency, mental health, you know, others. The point ones, point one percent equate to approximately one point four, one point five million dollars.
Thank you. Mike Nemo had a really good question about Amazon and the sales taxes associated with purchases through Amazon. Do you know how that's being tracked, Mark?
Well, in terms of how it's being tracked, certainly, that is more of a Department of Revenue question. Certainly, my understanding is anything that is delivered to a home that is purchased online, that tax revenue does flow you know, to the jurisdiction in which that residence applies. That's my understanding of of how that how those revenues basically get distributed. And 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 that brings up a bigger issue, you know, that I know has come up from time to time, you know, when the pandemic first hit, you know, there was obviously a lot of difficulty, a lot of uncertainty regarding, okay, how is this going to impact us relative to the last recession that we went through? Two thousand eight, two thousand nine and 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 certainly the shift, as I mentioned before, of discretionary spending going from, you know, travel to, you know, home improvements and and other discretionary spending. Big difference between oh eight and oh nine and today and 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 the economic conditions that we're in today is online activity was not being taxed consistently. That was, you know, that that was a that was something that happened after the fact. And so certainly, as we've seen more and more people move to getting more comfortable purchasing things online and the fact that the sales tax revenue is now being collected on that, I think helped our, you know, helped our county, you know, weather this better than what we experienced in oh eight, oh nine. I mean, when you look at the oh eight, oh nine sales tax revenues when we didn't have online sales being taxed and granted, you know, wait, no, nine, there was not as much e commerce that was happening then than there is now, but it was still it was significant back then. But, you know, we saw, you know, mid high single digit declines in our in our tax revenues or sales tax revenues during that period. We did not see that this time around. And I think, you know, I think you could chalk some of that up to, you know, the fact that we do have, we are collecting sales tax revenue on online activity now.
Yeah, it's interesting to think about, you know, if someone were to buy items for a vehicle, for example, is that going to be will that show in that motor vehicle accessories section or is that going to show in some other area? And what if they bought eight different items? Is that categorized?
That's a great, that's a great question, and that's probably a question that Department of Revenue would be able to better better answer than I I do. One of the things I suspect, and this is in conversations that I've had with the Treasurer's Office is that though these N A I C S codes, the North American Industry Classification System, this is the the numbering sequence that DOR uses to assign all these various businesses into the the various categories that we have reported here are only as good as the determination by the filer as to what segment their business falls under. And 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 certainly, I think that the amount of quality control that happens at the Department of Revenue to really look at these to make sure that they are properly categorized, we suspect is not as robust as we'd like to see it. Now, you know, does a order that comes comes across from Amazon, does that get split up between, okay, if you're talking about buying you know, a a CD versus a book versus, you know, buying a piece of furniture and if those things get re categorized that way? I it's hard for me to say. I doubt it. It just depends on what how that filer is required to break down those revenue streams. I I doubt very seriously that they are going through and and and, you know, categorizing it that way. I I would think that the one category that I believe is in my slides when you look at retail trade that I think captures a lot of this activity is electronic shopping and mail order, you know, houses. I think I think the Amazons of the world are most likely getting captured under that category.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I will try to have a DOR expert on in the next few months and see if they can answer some of these questions for us. Mike Skinner had a really good question I saw in the chat. Mike, do you want to ask that?
Sure. Thanks, Colleen. Hey, great job, Mark. Really good presentation of the data. I'm just wondering, you know, the data is really focused on consumption and and maybe too much of our economic development analysis looks at consumption. And what efforts are there to get underneath those numbers and kind of understand, for example, how much of that consumption was fueled by CARES Act funding and stimulus? And is that is that, you know, that it's easy to walk away from this and and sort of feel like I can exhale now, you know, we're four percent up over last year and sales in sales revenue, but sales tax revenue, but there there's a bigger story, I think, that needs to be told. What what analysis is there of, you know, the impact on household assets, for example, have those been driven down? And what is there any way we can see from these numbers what's going on with the overall resiliency of the local economy? Are we more resilient now than we were because we have five percent more tales, sales tax revenue or is there a bigger story to be told?
Mike, that that's a great question. And, you know, in in terms of doing in depth analysis, certainly, you know, we probably need to have a a couple of economists on our staff, you know, really to, you know, dive into that. And even then, you know, it's it's kind of a running joke, you you put ten economists in the same room and they're going to come up with ten different answers as to how much is being driven by one formula form of stimulus versus the other. All I can say is, you know, I think one of the things that we have to look at is you know, judging how resilient our 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 sales, sales activity within the county is is looking at a period of time that was loaded with stimulus spending versus one that you we saw a a downdraft or an elimination or an expiration of of stimulus. And so, you know, certainly in the first or second quarter of this year, we saw a tremendous amount of stimulus come into the economy. As people were losing their jobs, assuming they got through the unemployment filing process, okay, they were suddenly getting an additional twenty four hundred, twenty four hundred dollars a month of of income on top of their state unemployment benefits. And that that continued through, I believe, the end of July of of this year. And, you know, we had a lot of the federal stimulus checks start going out the door in April and and certainly in talking with various businesses. They absolutely saw an uptick in the amount of activity that they were getting from people who had gotten their stimulus checks. You know, in fact, you know, several had said, hey, got my stimulus money, I'm here to, you know, buy, you know, so and so. And so that certainly had an impact. But one of the things that was interesting is once we got outside of when that hyper level of stimulus was was pumped into the economy at the consumer level. When when all of that had really kind of run its course, and I would say that's probably July into August, so let's just take, let's just extend it to, you know, to August, because obviously, you know, people were, you know, perhaps still receiving their 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 July benefits, you know, you know, into August. But if you look at August through December, if if we felt that the stimulus, you know, if if the stimulus was going to have a huge impact, that's, you know, downward downdraft impact on the economy, you would think that we would have seen that in August and December or through December, and we didn't. If anything, we saw an uptick. Now, I think a combination of things happened. I think there was, you know, obviously, we had more businesses opening, you know, expanding capacity. I think there was pent up demand that perhaps you know, certainly we saw that in the automotive dealership, you know, world where, you know, people couldn't buy a car if they wanted to for two and a half months. So it's, you know, I I hate to say this, but, you know, I, you know, and to answer that question definitively, what, you know, breaking down how much economic impact is it was driven by the stimulus versus how much was just our, our, you know, overall resilience to 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 what was happening from a consumer level? It's just, it's really hard to pin down. But I just, you know, certainly, I I I took some some comfort in seeing how resilient our sales tax revenue held up even in the absence of that stimulus money basically evaporating. And so I don't know if that answers your question. Certainly from a home net worth standpoint, you know, we, we're unfortunately not in a in a position where we're, you know, I think monitoring that. Certainly, I think you know, from a county standpoint, you know, everyone understands how our, you know, how our our property values continue to increase in this county. Certainly, we saw a major rebound in the stock market from the falling off a cliff that we saw in in, you know, at the onset of 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 COVID. And now to where we are today and people who stayed the course there, I think, you know, household net worth is probably held up, you know, pretty well. Now, obviously, we've got a segment of our community that's hurting, you know, both from a folks who lost their job, got brought back and then lost their job again when their business got phased, phased closed down again. And then you also have small businesses who quite frankly have been struggling this entire time. And, you know, the the financial stress that that those individuals are under. But you know, the other thing I would point out too, and, you know, and again, this, this is something sometimes that I think we forget is you, when you look at the the makeup of our county in terms of our demographics and our, you know, and our average age in this county, because we skew so much older within this county relative to, you know, the larger counties in Puget Sound, you know, we, the other thing I think we've come to realize is that with an older population that has a, that's not necessarily dependent upon employment to drive their their spending. I I think that provides some resilience and some buffer as well during times when, you know, unemployment increases. And certainly, I think that spending could have been impacted if our mark of our stock market had gone down as much as it did and then stayed down, then I think you would have seen some significant tightening of belts that were happening. But I think, you know, as that, as the market rebounded, I think there was a, I mean, that certainly, I believe, helped people's confidence in understanding that, you know, these, this downturn is really being driven by a, you know, a once in a hundred years event that you know, we're, we're, you know, we're on a path to to overcoming through vaccination and other measures being taken. So I I I'm sorry if I, hopefully that answers your question somewhat. I, on the other parts of it, you know, it's, it's very hard to pin down exactly. There's just too many variables to be able to answer with one hundred percent certainty, the other other aspects of your question, Mike.
So also Chair Allen had a question that he placed in the chat. Chair Allen?
Thanks, Colleen. So I'm wondering, excuse me, Mark, if you guys are keeping track of the number of businesses that are that are going out of business. So we have an idea what that impact is. As well, I see we have numbers on unemployment, which is a measure, but particularly interested in the number of businesses that this can't can't sustain through the pandemic.
So I I can partially add that, add to that, or talk to it. So one of my staff members has been trying to track that kind of information and working with our chambers on anecdotal information that they have. But there is no, that Department of Revenue and E S D, D O L licensing, they all have data, but they don't even share in between themselves. That's something that the link that I put in there in the Commerce's dashboard, that was, that's the first time I know of that there has been any concerted effort statewide to try to bring those different items together in one place. And so because of this proprietary information, there isn't a lot of data that someone, even a local government can receive. Now, we, so some cities and counties have business license requirements. And so those have to be renewed annually. The city of Squim has a business license requirement, but the county does not, the city of Forks, nor the city of Port Angeles does. So they can track that kind of thing year over year, how many new ones have come in, how many older businesses did not renew their licensing. But you know, otherwise, we really, in a large way, fly blind unless we do our own analysis from making phone calls and on Yelp and just, you know, data information. There are some resources through E S D, but they are a third party system that it is, it probably forty percent of the data is bad, as, you know, I go through and it is still showing that, you know, primo construction is there, you know, things like that, that when they closed down six years ago. So we're doing our best, but in a lot of ways, are we fly blind? Okay, I see that Donna had a question. Oh, just about just about idle advances. And I'll talk to you about that, Donna, after we finish here. Does anyone have any questions for the commissioners more generally about reopening or anything along those lines? Because I see we have five more minutes left and I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask their elected officials about what's happening in Clallum. Did we get all of the questions asked in the chat? I don't know that Brad had a question about any measured increase or decrease in the local homelessness. Are you seeing, and then also an increase or decrease in people moving here? I know anecdotally that the market is booming. There, my brother is in real estate and they have had a lot of people moving here, particularly from the Seattle area. And they, I do have a report that shows the number of transactions that occur on a, you know, historically going back till about two thousand and two. And our transaction level is really quite high. And of course, our building industry is very, very busy. So
So, Colleen, Ron, I say, I see that chat about when we will open. I I had a long conversation with the governor's shop yesterday, chiming in with our local leadership about the phasing and they can't make promises, but they their indicators they're using right now, I mean, indicates that that we'll go to phase two the week after next. It's just sort of informal FYI. And, you know, everybody knows the problem is is what's going on in Kitsap and down in Mason. So anyhow, so I threw some questions in there for Mark, who's going to follow up on the penitentiary. They're looking at removing the penitentiary COVID cases from the factors that helps our cause, moving into the next phase. So that's what I know.
That's great input. Thank you very much.
So, Colleen, I noticed that Brian Cole had a question regarding the N A I C S codes. And so, you know, Brian, to answer your question, your question was, did you have to interpret the N A I C S codes in the report generated from D O R? Or is there a way for the category names to show? What I ended up doing there is if you, if you go, and I believe if if Colleen provided you guys a link where you can potentially generate these reports, there is a link on the screen. If it's all right, I'm going to just do a share screen real quick so everyone can see this. Okay, can everyone see this? So this is, this is a report generation portal on Department of Revenue. And, you know, here's where you would select your your periods that you want to report on. Here's where you would select the locations. And again, I've selected Unicor, Clown County, Forks, Port Angeles, Squim. And you can indicate what kind of tax you want. Right here is where you can set your filter level for what in a N A I C S codes. Now, there's codes at where there's only two digits, and that's a highly consolidated group of of businesses, kind of that second slide of my presentation is using a a two-digit and I, and I, I can't talk today. N A I C S codes. But then you can get down to as far as six digits. So think of the digits as providing greater and greater granularity into what businesses make up that that higher level. And so if you ever want to understand what makes up or what's what businesses are included in here, there's a link right here called list of N A I C S codes. And if you click on that, that will provide you your two-digit ranges, which again, these are mirror what I have in my presentation on Slide two. And then if you want to see what makes up these, so let's just click on, let's click on retail trade. And then you can see, here's the hierarchy making up those. So, you know, you've got motor vehicle and parts dealers, and then anything with a, that begins with a four, four, one rolls up underneath there. And so you can see, you know, you can get down to, you know, boat dealer levels, you can get, you know, down to motorcycle boat and other vehicle dealers. So you can get to that, down to that level of granularity. Now, I kept my presentation, I didn't want to go too far into the weeds, otherwise it's just going to be information overload. But I kept the the deeper dive slides of my presentation are really are based upon this four-digit code here. So anyway, hopefully that answers your question, Brian.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
One challenge there, though, that we have because two different very important sectors in our economy is maritime and then also the timber industry. But those sectors, you can't, there's no timber industry rolled up into one. That falls under retail, it falls under manufacturing, it falls under wholesale trade and transportation. So you have to dive down and get, you know, the different makes codes to pull out together to have aggregated information. But because there aren't that many businesses in the there, there are a lot of business, for example, that are individual log truckers. And you can get that information, but then when you go to mills, there's very few. So that information is zeroed out. So unless we can get some, a direct agreement from the county to D O R where Mark could then take different makes codes and pull it all together up, say, for maritime as we define it, or timber, we can never find out really general, how that, how that economy is doing unless we do separate individual contracts where we hire an economist and they go out to find this information. And that's what we've had to do in the past to apply for grants, whereas larger communities have plenty of businesses in all those categories. So they are able to just get the information very easily. All right. Well, there's lots of questions now in the chat, I see. And so one, I'm just gonna has have nonprofits been removed from the tax base in the county over the past decade or so? Any response? I don't know exactly what that question is referring to. But let's see. All right. Well, I don't see any right off the top of my head questions that we could probably respond to very quickly. So, and it is after nine o'clock, so I think we ought to allow our elected officials and Mark to get on with their day. But I think this has been really valuable to the people, to a lot of business owners that are on with us to understand where these resources are and to know that you guys are really fighting on their behalf, along with our legislators. So on behalf of them, thank you so much for all the incredible work you're doing for the business owners in our community. And I'm going to go ahead and stop the recording now. So thank